This year, Say What would like to honor two youth advocates for their hard work and dedication to youth tobacco prevention by awarding them the 2020 Say What Member Award. Our first awardee is Dana Pennington from youth group Young Ladies of Elegance in the Houston area. Dana graduated high school this year, but she's dedicated 10 years to youth tobacco prevention by serving her community, peers, and youth group, leading and mentoring the way to encourage others to join her and her efforts in helping create the first tobacco, nicotine, and vape-free generation. She's also served by leading the Youth Tobacco Prevention Initiative in the Houston area and her youth group's president. Congratulations Dana on receiving a 2020 Say What Member Award, and give her some virtual applause and cheers. Our next awardee is Crystal Salmaron from youth group V-Cot Vikings Kicking Out Tobacco in Bryan High School. Crystal is a passionate young person dedicated to making a difference in her school and in the lives of her friends and peers. At the local level, she was instrumental in the passage of a comprehensive smoke-free ordinance by attending and speaking at numerous city council meetings. Way to go, Crystal, and congratulations on receiving an award. We're so excited to award both of these young ladies with a 2020 Say What Member Award, and you'll get to hear more from them during today's closing session as they're featured on the youth panel discussion. Now, we know Dana and Crystal aren't the only passionate youth advocates apart of Say What. Many of you are watching now, and many of you are wondering how to get involved. So take a look at our Say What promo video to discover just how easy it can be to get involved and how to take your efforts to the next level at being a youth tobacco prevention advocate for Texas.
They prepare us to be advocates in our community.
It serves as a catalyst for groups who are passionate about tobacco prevention.
And as you get more and more involved, you learn a lot more about how to develop yourself as a person, as a leader, and as an advocate for tobacco prevention.
Every year, we do the cigarette butt cleanup.
We're kind of known for doing cigarette butt cleanups, and we also do scavenger hunts around the community.
Of course, we had Red Ribbon Week.
We host meetings where we talk about prevention and the harmful effects of using tobacco.
At lunch, we would do trivia's and we'd ask questions and hand out all these prizes.
We did a parade a few years. We also sought to change our ordinance in our town to make Ingle Side smoke free. I started off as just a high schooler with some type of a desire to do something more.
Like, the reason I started volunteering is because I grew up taking care of my brothers. So it's just something that like made it into my head that I always have to be helping someone.
And when I was NJJES president, that's when it really clicked for me. I was like, wow, like, this is something serious. I remember getting really excited because I was like, whoa, like, this is actually making a change.
Like, I found passion in tobacco because my dad used to use it when I was little, and I somehow made it quit when I was little. So it was like, it just felt right for me to join Say What.
My story in tobacco prevention and control isn't rooted in a loved one that has died from tobacco or was significantly affected by tobacco. It was really just like leaders in my life who were like, okay, here are opportunities for you to be engaged, and we need to highlight that more because like not every young person is going to have that personal story about why they should be involved in something like this. And I think that Say What and the School Safety Center has done a lot of great work to relay that message and to communicate that people can be involved even if they don't have a significant why.
Through all of the volunteerism that I've done, I recently was awarded a proclamation from the mayor of Houston, so Mr. Mayor Sylvester Turner, and it's September 27th for Arnold Torres Day. So now I basically have my own day in Houston history of everything that I've done and everything I've done for tobacco prevention and Say What as well.
I choose to live tobacco-free because I just want to be able to live my life to the fullest and not have to be tied down to that. I just want to be able to go to college and make my mother proud and like start my own family, you know, just really use like my time on this earth to the fullest potential without having any restrictions, and that's including tobacco, which is a great one.
My why is really because I care about my friends, and I've seen my friends use these products, and I encourage all of them not to. I know the facts. I do this for like, like, it's like basically a job to me, like, I really am passionate about this, and I'm trying to make sure that my community knows about vaping and the epidemic that's going on right now.
Really, your voice is like your biggest tool. I mean, that's one thing that no one can take away from you.
What up, what up, what up, what up? Uh, I hope everybody can hear me. I hope everybody can see me. What is going on, Say What? Oh, how y'all got me so hyped in my apartment? I'm about to get a noise complaint, but I don't care about these neighbors. Um, what's up, everybody? My name is Matt Ransdale Jr. If we haven't met before, it is so great to be digitally and virtually meeting you right now in this moment, and if we have met before, it is so good to be digitally seeing you right now, all right? So it's really, really great. I'm looking at everybody in these comments, in these chats. Thank you for showing love. Today, we're going to have a pretty incredible youth panel, y'all. If y'all know Say What the way I know Say What, you know they do everything big. And the youth panel that I've had the privilege and pleasure of moderating before was full of some heavy-hitting young people, so we have nothing short of that today. So let me go ahead and get this started. I don't want y'all to have to wait at all. Um, I want them to introduce themselves to you. So I'm going to give them a little bit of a heads up. We're going to start with Ms. Dana Pennington. She is a 2020 Member Award winner. Dana, get in here and say hi.
Hi, everybody. My name is Dana Pennington, and I've been a youth advocate for tobacco for 10 years in running, and I graduated from Glendale Dawson High School in June, and I will be attending Grambling State University for a double major in kinesiology and psychology.
Yes, Dana, you know we love a double major. Dana said, "I don't need one major when I can get two majors." All right, congratulations, Dana. It's so good to meet you and have you here. Moving on down the list, we have another 2020 Member Award winner. We have Ms. Crystal Salmaron. Crystal, pop in here and say hi.
Hi, everyone. I'm Crystal from Vikings Kicking Out Tobacco here in Bryan, Texas, and I am a rising senior. I'm so excited to be here with y'all today.
That's what's up, Crystal. I love that you said you're a rising senior. That just makes me feel empowered listening to you. Crystal, it is so good to have you here. Thank you for taking the time to be on this panel. Let's keep it moving down the list. We've got Ms. Charlene Moore. She's a TA. Say what's up, Charlene?
Hey, everyone. Like Matt said, I'm a teen ambassador. This is my first year. I actually attend Jefferson High School in Jefferson, Texas, and yeah, I'm an upcoming sophomore, and I'm super excited to be on this youth panel with all these great youth advocates.
All right, Charlene, thank you. You see, Charlene's flexing on all of us with these AirPods, y'all. So if you've got, if you've got wires in your headphones, Charlene is sending you a subliminal message. Anyways, Charlene, glad you're here. Next up, we're going to have another TA. Y'all may know her, Ms. Ella Troop. Ella, if you're here, come say hi.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ella. I'm also a teen ambassador. I am a first-year teen ambassador. I'm from Centon, Texas, and I am an upcoming sophomore at Centon High School.
Yes, Ella. I want that backdrop. I don't know if that's a blanket or a backdrop, but I love that you have it. And I love that we have, come on, Say What. I love that we have first-year ambassadors here. So we've got a really well-rounded panel for y'all today from a lot of different points of view. And then last but not least, we got my homie, Dagan Smith. He's another TA. Dagan, get in here and say hello.
Everybody, I'm Dagan Smith. I'm 17. I'm from Shepherd, Texas, and I'm a senior this year.
Yes, Dagan is a senior. And y'all might not know about this because Dagan's humble, but Dagan is also a new drum major. So he just made drum major. He's going to be out there keeping that band in shape and in line. So yeah, yeah, yeah. Leave the humility at the door, Dagan. We want to, we want to stand you, bro. Anyways, it is so good to have every single person here. I'm looking, we got 132 participants. This Zoom is lit. So I want to dive straight into some of these questions, y'all. Y'all know Say What has a lot of things they want to discuss and discover, and I'm glad that y'all get to listen with us. Now, let me remind you, at the end of this, I'm going to try not to be too long-winded because at the end of this, we are going to save a little room for a Q and A, all right? So while you're listening to everybody share their really beautiful opinions, think of some questions that we can have at the end that you can ask your TAs or myself because we'd love to engage with you when this is all done. But with that being said, let's move right into some of these questions. Panelists, I might ask you very specifically what you think about some of these, or I just might ask all of you to free for all it, okay? So work with me. We're going to have a lot of fun here. Here is the first question. I can see y'all's little faces. So if y'all want to answer something, like, do me a favor, just raise your hand and I'll call upon you. We can unmute you, then we can answer the question, okay? So the first one's actually for everybody, okay? What is the most difficult challenge for you to overcome during these past five months of COVID-19? As you're all extremely well aware, we've all been globally involved with this pandemic. So there's going to be a lot of challenges that we've all had to face. So what is some of the most difficult challenges you've had to face in the last five months? Who would like to take a crack at that first? Dana, I see you over here. Dana, tell me how you're feeling.
Um, my, the worst challenge I had was not being able to see my friends these past five months because I just graduated from high school, and we're supposed to, you know, like socialize and, and see each other before we go off to our different colleges. So that's been my toughest thing, and I'm not a homebody, so I'm stuck in the house, can't go anywhere. And I also won't have a fall semester. I'll be online because we're too worried about COVID, so yeah.
Yeah, Dana said, "I'm bored in the house, and I'm in the house bored." No, I'm just kidding. Well, Dana, I mean, imagine this. If you, if I, if you were me when I was you, you would be having the FaceTime and the Instagram and the Zoom, you know what I mean? So I know you can't connect with people for high fives, but you can at least do what we're doing right now. So thank you for hanging in there. Somebody else who wants to take a crack at that question? What's one of the most, Charlene, let's hear it from you.
Okay, so it was super hard, you know, coming to terms with it. Um, you know, at a certain point, you just kind of have to be like, okay, so something is changing, and to keep me and my family safe, you know, you have to change your lifestyle a little bit. It was super hard, you know, having to deal like getting opportunities taken away and having experiences, you know, you missing out on. And definitely the isolation because, I mean, I've been, I'm like the only child because I was the only child in the house and stuff, and so I was really close with all of my friends, you know? I hung out with them all the time, you know? And so, you know, even like my closest friend, she has like asthma, so she was like on lockdown. So it was really hard not being able to see them and stuff, but you know, we're making it through it, you know, with FaceTime and Zooms like that, so yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you, Charlene. You guys honestly, I don't, y'all, I hope one day in hindsight, y'all can give yourself credit for being as tough as you are because this is not easy for anybody, and the fact that y'all are going through it as young people is extremely empowering. So who wants to, who wants to go up next? Tell me about some of the biggest difficulties. Dagan Smith?
Some of the biggest difficulties I've had with this coronavirus is definitely communication, like trying to talk to my teachers, my principals, my counselors, trying to get a hold of like my different adults I have to rely on and stuff. Communication's really been strained with all of this.
Yeah, absolutely, Dagan. Man, and I appreciate you doing what you can do to make sure you're pushing through that hurdle, right? I know communication is strained and difficult, but I'm really, really glad that you're finding ways to communicate right now because you've got like over 100 people listening to you. So you are communicating just fine, my friend. Crystal, what about you? You want to throw your two cents in? I think I saw your hand raised a while ago.
Yeah, I would say my biggest challenge has been not knowing what's going to happen next. Back in April, when we had a two-week break because of COVID, I was thinking, all right, great, it's just two weeks, we're going to go back to school, everything's going to be fine. And then they canceled school for the rest of the year. I was like, all right, all right, that's fine. I still have my summer. I still have next year, you're going to be in person. I'm going to, it's going to be my first time flying out of state, get to go to DC, and then that got canceled. Everything went online. All the programs that I had fine, they went away. I had new programs coming up, so that was also very cool. And then next year, it went all online. Well, not all online, but it's still not apparent what's going to happen. It's all up in the air, and it's very worrying that this is out of my control, but it also means there are new opportunities that are going to come about.
Come on. I love that optimism at the end, Crystal. Yeah, I mean, life is out of our control, right? So shout out to the organizations that are still finding ways to execute. Shout out to Say What, right, for not letting something like this ruin or cancel the entire conference, you know? This has given us an opportunity to problem solve. Last but not least, my first year, Ella. You got, you got some two cents you want to throw in?
I just agree with what everybody is saying, especially about the loneliness and the isolation. Ever since school shut down, it's kind of just been my sister and I at the house by ourselves and again, just really not knowing what's going to come next, and everything is just so new. We were going to take an extra week of spring break, and we were excited for it, and then it was another week, and then it was another month, and then before we knew it, school was shut down for the rest of the year, and we're not even sure if we're going to get to go back in person this year.
Right, right, right. Man, well, I am so, 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 so grateful that you're here today, and I'm so sorry that you've been having to deal with all of these things, but I don't know a stronger group of people for it. So as much as this sucks, I hope you're finding optimism the way Crystal did at the end of her sharing. I hope you guys are finding ways to stay positive and optimistic about the future, and I hope you're finding ways to problem solve because we don't know how long this is going to last, but we do know that it doesn't have to keep us down, right? So thank you guys for sharing. Let's move on to our next question. We're getting all emotional off the bat. This question is also for everybody. I'll call, and if you don't feel comfortable asking, feel free to not answer, or answering, feel free to not answer, right? What have you been doing to occupy yourself during social distancing and staying home? What can others do that are feeling sad and lonely, right? We already discussed how we're all kind of stuck, right? And that's not the best feeling in the world. So what are you doing in that time, and what can you encourage others to do? Crystal, you want to go first? Come on.
So back to when I said I got some new exciting opportunities. I've actually been taking time to focus on one of my passions, which is STEM. I've been doing this through research and coding programs. I've also been practicing piano and German, two things that I have some knowledge over, but I definitely have a lot to improve in. And I would say if you're feeling down, I would recommend taking a day to do some self-care, whether that's doing the work you need to do, cleaning your room, or whether it's having a little spa day for yourself, definitely have a day to yourself. There are many, there are also many online social media groups through platforms such as Facebook, Discord, and Slack where you can bond with people who have the same passion as you, whether it's learning German or studying for the SAT.
Crystal, okay. She out here learning German and piano, and I'm watching The Office for the seventh time, eating cinnamon toast crunch. You know what I mean? Two different kinds of people in this world. Crystal, thank you so much. Who else wants to tell me what languages you're learning? I'm just kidding. What else? Anybody else want to contribute? What are you doing during this time? What can you encourage others to do? Yeah, yeah, Charlene, talk to me.
Great. So, um, yeah, picking up on new hobbies is like a great thing, and I highly recommend. I've been trying to like pick up back on piano. I used to be so good, like I did, you know, when I was younger, and I'm trying to get back into it, but usually if anything is going bad or like, you know, my feelings are kind of down, I have the same solution, and that's to dance. I dance all the time. I literally, like the past, I mean, this whole time, I've been just, you know, stretching, choreographing, you know, getting ready for Captain Child since I just had a couple days ago. But anyways, yeah, see, yeah, it was, um, that's basically what I do, you know? I started picking back up on reading and, you know, finding new shows. It's just what's really been keeping my head up, you know, these Zoom calls with the teen ambassadors and the Say What. It's so nice to be able to like get on Zoom and talk about our feelings and stuff like that. So those have been like so helpful to me, and I just want to like shout them out because those are the best calls and like a really good way to let go of some things.
That's amazing. Fingers crossed for Charlene, Captain Charlene. Hey, you know, we love you, and we're excited for you. And yeah, thank you so much. So Charlene's been dancing sometimes, you know, I'm a sad, anyways, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not on TikTok. Who else? Who else has, has something they want to contribute? Yes, Ella, talk to me.
So I feel like I am the same as a lot of people, and I've been picking up on old hobbies that we lost because we just maybe didn't have time for them, but now there's nothing but time. I don't know if anybody remembers Rainbow Looms, but I recently just found my Rainbow Loom and all my rubber bands, so I've been making bracelets. Yes, and I've also gotten back into like cooking and baking. You would be surprised what you can make with just the stuff in your pantry. And for anyone feeling sad or lonely, just know that you're not alone. There's, I know, it's corny, but a lot of people, there's, in fact, there's not one single person that hasn't been affected by coronavirus, and you can reach out to anybody. If you feel like you can't talk to anyone around you, you could reach out to me or one of the TAs. I'm sure we would love to listen to you and talk to you if that's what you want.
Oh, Ella, I absolutely love that. Thank you so much. And last but not least, or anybody else want to come in before we move on to the next question? Feel free to let me know. Yeah, Dana, Dana, talk to me.
Um, I found some new TV shows because I have like all the streaming sites, and I still feel like I've watched everything to watch, but I'm still been trying to find new stuff. And I started up my business. It's called Shut Up Photography, and I'm going to be a freelance photographer. And to people that feel lonely, I would say talk to your family because, I mean, we're all stuck with our family anyway, so who better to talk to? Or to take a walk because the fresh air always feels nice, even though it's super hot, it always feels nice to take a little, you know, peaceful walk.
Yes, okay. Come on, photographer. Don't get it twisted just because she says she's freelance, that doesn't mean it's free, okay? Support this young girl's dreams, you know what I mean? Stay connected. I hope all of y'all get a chance to get connected. This is all digital, so there's tons of ways to support each other in your endeavors. And if y'all ever needed like a German lesson, y'all know who to call now if y'all want to work on piano. Anyways, anybody else? Dagan, you want to chime in here? Talk to me, brother.
What I've been doing since this whole COVID thing happened was I've been spending a lot of time with my family. We all live on one property. I have, you know, three sections of my family living on four acres of land, so we've all just been hanging out. So definitely, I've been spending time with my family, and for people who feel sad or lonely, find your happy spot. I love old music. If I feel sad or lonely, I'll throw on some old records or some old eight tracks and just listen to those. So find your happy spot, find your happy place, and go to it.
Dagan, y'all, listen, y'all are writing my next speech for me. Y'all are, y'all are, each one of you is a motivational speaker. I swear, I feel so empowered. I got goosebumps. Dagan, that's incredible, man. I know you just said eight tracks, and everybody was like, what is he talking about? So I just think it's really, really cool that you're that historically connected. But thank you so much, y'all. Those are really, really incredible answers, and thank you for being solution-based human beings, right? Like, in the beginning, we covered how hard this is, but we just now covered how much better we can make it. So y'all are, y'all are dope. Find your happy spot. Hashtag find your happy spot. That's dope. Dagan's going to release t-shirts. Stay tuned. Find your happy spot. All right, so question number three. It says, "What qualities or characteristics do you think are important for adult sponsors to have when working with the youth?" Now, this question is going to be specifically for Dana, Crystal, and Charlene. Let me repeat it one more time. What qualities or characteristics do you think are important for adult sponsors or adults to have, adult sponsors to have when they're working with the youth? Charlene, crack us off with this one. Let me know.
Okay, so honestly, I've had the best sponsors. Shout out Ms. Bryson, you know, and some like characteristics she has are like, she's very open-minded. You know, it's really important to be open-minded, so, you know, to listen to the youth. You know, it's really nice when the youth have ideas, and then you can talk about it with your sponsor, and then, you know, y'all both come up with some really great new things, and then we have like new stuff and get new people to join into it and stuff like that. So I think open-mindedness is like super important to be able to like, you know, get some ideas and share those things. So other than patience, so other than patience, I think being like open-minded is super important.
I love that, Charlene. Thank you so much. How about Crystal? You hop in here next. Tell me what you think.
Yeah, I definitely agree about the open-mindedness and sponsors. It's good to create a habit where you create a place for your students where they feel like they can be creative and bold in the ideas and suggestions they have and aren't afraid to be silenced out of your voice or others. Let the students be a catalyst for change in their community through their own ideas. If they need help conversing and brainstorming, of course, throw in some balls to get them rolling, but besides that, let the student speak and take the time to just listen.
Yes, Crystal, create that environment. That's a really beautiful thing to say. Sponsors, I know some of y'all are in here listening. I know some of y'all are in here taking notes, you know? They, they can't share if you don't care, you know what I'm saying? That's a nice little rhyme for you. But if you don't actually open up the environment to be like a place where people can contribute ideas, why would they? Crystal, that's, I mean, that is dope. Thank you so much for sharing. And last but not least, my double major, Dana, tell me what you think. What is something adult sponsors could do?
Um, I agree with Crystal and Charlene about the patience and open-mindedness, but my main thing is understanding because if you're going to be a sponsor, like an adult working with kids, then you have to be understanding that they can make mistakes and no one's perfect, especially not the sponsor themselves. So I think having understanding is also a very important trait to have.
Oh my gosh, that is so, 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 so. Y'all are so wise, man. I don't know how Say What does it every year, but y'all, y'all are just epic beyond belief. And those are all really, really, really incredible. So question number four, let's move it on along. Question number four is specifically for Dagan, Ella, and Charlene, okay? Tell us about a situation where you had to work with an adult and they didn't support an idea you had. How'd you handle it? How'd it make you feel? And would you have done anything differently? Dagan, Ella, and Charlene, let's start with Dagan, gentleman first. Tell us about that situation.
Yeah, um, working with the adults, they're just, they, they don't support you. That's like my entire town. I'm in such a town that's so closed-minded, so old that, you know, if the kids are doing tobacco or drinking alcohol or whatever, it's fine. It's just a social norm. Um, and so of course, all the parents feel the same way, and the adults, they're either too scared to say something, to stand up, or they just, you know, don't support it at all. So one thing I've had to do is just work around it because you can't let it stop you. It's like your first obstacle. Doesn't matter if an adult doesn't support you. Doesn't matter if the kid doesn't support you, as long as you stick by your message, then go for it. Just we have to work around it, work through all your obstacles.
Come on, Dagan, I appreciate that. Charlene, what about you? Could you tell us about one of these experiences?
Yeah, I'm really thankful and super blessed that, you know, most of my advocate journey, I've had a lot of support from my both friends and sponsors and stuff like that, but I think the only altercation I've kind of had, which I'm not sure if that's, if they didn't support me or what it really was, but it was really hard sometimes to communicate and work with my principal. Um, you know, I'm, I'm sure he's like a busy man or whatnot, but you know, sometimes it'd be like, okay, we're going to do this, and then it just, you know, never happened. But I was really thankful for my sponsor, Ms. Bryson, you know? She always like helped out. And if I couldn't like get to my principal, she always made sure, you know, we had something set up. So everything always got done and, oh, sorry. Everything ended up working out fine. But yeah, I'm super thankful for that. I don't, doing anything different, I just think it's kinda like the mindset he has. I think he's just not at the top, but I'm gonna continue, you know, to work and maybe, you know, start catching his eye. And when he starts seeing changes and stuff like that, he'll probably like take it more seriously and things. But yeah, like Dagan said, if this is happening to you, just go for it. If you're passionate about it, your passion should like drive you the whole way. So, you know, not everyone's gonna support you, but just focus on your goal.
Come on, yeah, 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 yeah. Your goal is not disqualified based off of the support you are or aren't getting. Also, real quick, before we go on, I just wanna say shout out to Ms. Burnside. Ms. Burnside, I see you in the chat, you know, all love. All right, all right, sorry, professional. Crystal, how about you? Chime in here.
Um, I would say that in my student council, our teachers that I've been used to, our teachers have been used to using the same schedule each year and don't really appear to be letting the students to grab their rails and lead themselves. For example, I and other members would produce videos and items and make changes for future plans. But instead, these plans are derailed because our sponsors would forget them or decide to ignore them. I would say since it was more of a group effort that we produced, we handled it well and calmly, but it made me at least feel disrespected, like they didn't respect the work that we were doing for the club. If it's done anything different, I would have been, I would have taken the time to be more forward with them and the experience and how I felt about the whole situation.
Thank you so much, Crystal. Yeah, sometimes you have to go through these uncomfortable experiences to learn what you would do differently the next time, right? So thank you for sharing. All right, guys, I know we have about like six, seven more minutes, so we're gonna roll through these next two questions really, really quickly. I'll call upon some of you to answer this one. But what tips do you have for other youth who want to perfect their presentation skills? What tips do you have for other youth who want to perfect their presentation skills? Crystal, I see you already got your, let's just keep it rolling, Crystal, keep it going.
Yes, okay, so this is something that actually really helped me. I would say do something that forces you to go in front of a, like, an audience of hundreds, two thousands of people. For me, my freshman year, like the year before high school, I was so shy. I was so nervous. I was like, dang, I don't wanna talk to anybody, just let me be in my own bubble. But then I joined Color Guard, and in Color Guard, I would be in front of hundreds, two thousands of people. We went to the state level and I was just performing. And I felt so, it felt so natural to be in front of these, in front of thousands of people. And that's because it forced me to go out of my comfort zone. But of course, after that, I would recommend do academic decathlon or UIL. That way you actually like speak in front of people other than perform.
You're gonna be the type of parent that just throws your kid in the deep end, telling him to learn how to swim. How do you perfect your presentation skills? You go speak in front of a thousand people, you figure it out. How about Ella? Ella, you're a youngster in the group. Tell, tell me what you would tell them, some advice, because you're a young presenter and you're really, really great at it. I'm extremely impressed by you, Ella. So tell me, what's some advice you would get?
Well, thank you. And first, I just wanna say that, like Crystal said, academic decathlon really helps. I was actually in academic decathlon this year and I am going to be in it this year as well. It is so nerve-wracking giving a speech to those people, but it really just puts you out of your comfort zone and helps you so much to gain that confidence. And some people just do have the natural ability to present, but just because you don't doesn't mean you can't improve. And just because you already have that natural ability doesn't mean you don't have stuff that you could work on. If you are watching a presentation and there's something that you see that you like, take that and make it your own. Try and incorporate that into your presentation. And now there's just so many resources online. You could even watch our virtual summit. And this conference is gonna be available, I believe, afterwards, recorded. So you could just watch it over again.
Come on, Ella. Ella, I am snapping the entire time you are speaking. You are incredible, young lady. Ruben Garza said, "Period, Ella." Ruben, shout out to Ruben, I love you, brother. Okay, we're gonna move on to the last question because I wanna make sure we leave a little bit of time for some personal Q and A moments. I'm gonna ask some of our seniors, our upperclassmen this question. What tips or advice do you have for other youth who wanna take their leadership and advocacy efforts to the next level? I know it's not an easy journey and y'all have been doing it for quite some time. So what, what advice do you have? Let's start off with Dana, the double major. What advice do you have? Talk to me.
My main thing is to be persistent and never give up and don't ever worry about being judged by your peers because me being me and me doing this for ten years, I was definitely judged because I've been peer pressured into people trying to get me to smoke and all that stuff. And it's really like standing your own ground and speaking up for what you believe in and project your voice while doing it so you can be heard.
That is so powerful because you're so right. It's not gonna be easy. You will, you will face judgment and peer pressure and blah, 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 blah. People will call you names and assume things about you. But if you can stay confidently strong in the way you feel, that's your character, y'all. That's your integrity. Thank you so much. I know why you're a leader, Dana. Dagan, talk to me, drum major, big man on campus. Tell me, give some advice.
So some advice to take your leadership to the next role is three words. Just do it. Just take that leap, just do it. You know, it starts with you. So if you're gonna, if you wanna become a better advocate or a better presenter, gotta go out there and try for it. If you wanna be whatever you wanna be, you've just gotta go for it. Don't let anything hold you.
Dagan, you're a motivational speaker, sir. Tell me, just do it, get out there. You're just encouraging people. Come on, Dagan. All right, this is such a good question. Real quick, does anybody else wanna just take one more bite out of this cake real quick? Does anybody else wanna throw in their two cents on any tips or advice on how to take their leadership or advocacy to the next level? Charlene, are you scratching your head or raising your hand? She scratched her head, my fault. Okay, anybody else? Anybody gonna once? Going twice? All right, cool. Y'all, we had an incredible panel, but let's get a few questions. This has been a pretty incredible combo, y'all. Combo, convo. But, okay, we got Maddie Howard. She said, "What made you push yourself to become a TA?" We are gonna go with Dagan. Yeah, Dagan, keep it rolling.
So I had this really, really amazing sponsor back before I moved to Shepherd. And she really pushed for you to, you know, do the best, make the best and all that. And she, one day, I was a lot younger than the youth group itself. My brother was in it. My brother wanted to take me to a Say What event. And so teacher allowed him. I got to experience a little bit of Say What. And then a little bit farther down the road, it was just me with the teacher going to the Say What events. And I got to meet up with the TAs and I was just like, this is something I want to do. This is very empowering. I just love it. So I went to the conference and I figured out, you know what? This is my passion. This is what advocacy is, my passion. So I just went for it.
Dagan, I, I personally, I wanna say I remember you when you were young. And man, I am so, so, so proud of the young man you're becoming. So it's been really, really cool to watch you, you know, become the leader you are, man. I'm super proud of you. I'm super proud to know you. All right, Kathleen Bates, the legend, says, "What tobacco prevention accomplishment are you the most proud of?" That's a question for anybody. What tobacco prevention accomplishment are you the most proud of?